Good evening. This is Mary Decoursey, Chair of the Auburn Public Board, I'm sorry, Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:30 on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2004. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded in the Merriam Room at the Auburn Public Library, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order, March 12, 2020, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location due to the COVID-19 virus. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Okay. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Friday, March 29, 2024. Please permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Matt Toth.
Present.
Vera Karain.
Present.
Erica Bresaker.
Present.
Lindsay Baker.
Present.
Lindsay, oh, sorry, Steve Redding.
Present.
And Mary Decoursey, myself, present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Molly Halsar, Auburn Public Library.
Present.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will begin the meeting. Before we go to the minutes, I just want to take a second to talk about when we, our last meeting, there was a little bit of tension that I want to be able to take a minute and address because I don't want to feel that people at the meeting can't be free to share their own opinions. Just want to explain that in our past BOT meetings, there was a real sense of tension based upon the fact that when we would, you know, have goals in the meeting, oftentimes there was a sense that it became a kind of a library director-centric meeting, and it became very tense. And one meeting specifically that it came to a halt and we've been able to shift away from that was on May 3rd, 2023. The board came together, we were trying to finalize a collection policy. The meeting went on for two hours and 20 minutes, and in that meeting, I really stated a hard line that this is a committee. Everybody has a voice. Everybody needs to feel present and feel able to participate. It shouldn't feel in any way as though there are camps or that we're in any, there shouldn't be any sense of inhibition. I just want to share that with everybody at the board. It really is important, this is a committee, we are appointed and elected, we serve the people, but the goals that I'm really excited about, which I will share with you in our next meeting, that I just want to give you a couple of quick pride outcomes. This year, we're very prideful to say that we have Lindsay Baker in partnership with the Board of Selectmen, she was able to be appointed. In addition to that, a second issue is, that has been really positive, is improved communications and the quality of our BOT meetings, thanks to the library liaison, Molly Halsar, and the support of the town manager and the assistant town manager. Our collections policy, I just want to give credit to both Vera Karain and Matt Toth. This is the first time in Auburn, Massachusetts history that we've had a collections policy. They pushed it, all I did is show up at the meeting and listen and learn, but that was a really exciting outcome. In addition to that, just two more positives that we feel really good about. The APL friends, they have full access to the APL library, from the front door to their storage space, which has been provided here at the library, we're very excited because they have important work. And then finally, tonight, we're going to talk about the strategic plan, we're going to look at the tactics, which are also referred to in other venues as metrics or rubrics, and take a look at where we're at, and I hope to have a rich conversation with everybody about how we're going to move forward. So I just wanted to start there, that please feel free, everyone, have an opinion, we can disagree, agree, but it needs to be safe for everybody to have a position and to support that position. So the first item on the agenda is the, looking at the notes from the last meeting. Can I look at your agenda for one second? Yes, thank you. So we're going to review the meeting minutes from March 6, 2024, which Steve has been kind enough to provide for us. No, it's just I can't get the page. There you go. I'm sure it did. There's one right here. Now, I can't get that one either. Has everybody had enough time for reading the minutes? Yes.
I have.
Yes, please.
Yeah. These are incredible, by the way. They really are.
You're good.
I thought we had good ones before, these are really good.
Yes, agreed.
In number four, when we talked about the library director's responses to our questions because she's not here, they are available, those, it says in the minutes here, they are available to any resident without a request to the library director that should be upon request to the town clerk.
Okay.
Because they'd be attached to minutes.
I agree, and they will be for this meeting as well.
And Lindsay, I just have a question on page two.
Okay.
You said something about there was an email, in point four or point three, that there was an email explaining that this was opportunistic.
I don't have it open, so I can look for it. But yes, we received, I think, three emails prior to the last meeting that gave kind of-
Those were updates.
Real-time updates. And in one of those, there was a mention, I think I had read it out at the time, the sentence that said that it was based on, that basically resources and the budget had come together at the right time. That was my, that was my read on it.
Yeah, I found out that that was not correct, but I just, I just wondered if there was someplace in an email, and I'll look at that myself. That's okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
No, I remember that.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the minutes?
Maybe perhaps those emails should just be penned into the minutes if we're talking about them.
You know, I think that's what we will do, because I know there was a question about the responses to the questions, and again, going back to the two-hour, 20-minute meeting, we're not going to have two-hour, 20-minute meetings. Everybody here is committed, and we're going to keep the meetings tight to 45 to an hour. So anything that anybody wants access to will be included, so thank you for pointing that out. And that would include emails, that would include, you know, responses by the library director, all of that will be made very transparent. Did you have any other questions, Matt?
No.
Okay. Do I have anyone to vote for the approval of the minutes?
Sure.
That would be Matt T. Any, but can I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Erica. And can I just go through a quick vote call? I will support yes for the minutes, Vera Karain.
Yes.
Or Stephen Redding?
Yes.
Matt said yes, right?
Yes.
Erica says yes, Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
Yes, and Molly, I know that you're a library representative, but I still want to include you. Would you support the minutes? All right, so they are approved. We are going to move on to the review of the director's report, but I just want to point out, an email that I got from Jeanne, which was important, thank you both for having that dialogue. At the end of the email that she sent me, and I sent it to all of you, so it's included, there's an asterisk at the last paragraph, and it says, "A number of patrons have asked that responses to the questions be read at the meeting by the director's representative." That can be a lot of reading, so for this one, I will truncate them. I'm going to move that we are not going to read the responses, but I am going to include, I'm going to include them in the minutes. So they're transparent to everyone after this meeting. These meetings, minutes are approved, and I'll just attach these, but I'm not going to extend any sort of meeting time to reading very long-winded responses, and everybody can have access to those. So would you like to present the director's report?
Hi, Molly Halsar. I'm the administrator of Auburn Public Library. I have a direct report to the library director, Jeanne Collins. In Jeanne's absence, I present the director's report as written by her. If the board has any questions regarding the report, I'll convey them to the director, who will provide a response by email within the next two days. And if any members of the community have any questions, please not hesitate to contact the director via her email or by calling the library and asking for the director. So on facilities, additional repair to the double doors on the library, they are working currently at this time. Ongoing updates to the children's room expansion have been sent to the board by email, and that most recent one was also attached as part of the packet. We continue reading, relocating, updating, deleting, purchasing new titles, and re-shelving. In addition, thousands of materials have to be dusted due to the sanding process, which we work on continuously. The position of deputy director has been posted to the MBLC and the Town of Auburn website, and a copy is also attached as part of the packet. For technology, the catalog update, Aspen Discovery, we are getting past the glitches and the learning curve, there's still some bells and whistles to be explored, but feedback from our patrons and patrons in other libraries has been positive. The January, February, March newsletter was submitted to the town manager's office on Friday, March 28th, they published that on the town website. I read to children at Bryn Mawr's Community Reading Day last week, and the director or another staff member will be reading at Swanson Road School this week.
Awesome.
And the spring STEM beginnings grant was awarded, so we'll be doing that program again. On the finance and budget, after meeting with the town manager, assistant town manager, and CFO, the director presented the FY25 budget to the finance committee on Wednesday, March 20th. The budget was approved. She also requested a transfer from FY25 capital funds for technology to be moved to FY26, which was approved. The director also provided a copy of the trust fund report, which was attached as part of the packet here, in case the trustee is going to do that. And the tactics report is also attached as part of the packet. Just a selection of some of our upcoming programs. We're doing a eclipse program in-house for children six to 12, that's this Friday. We're also distributing the solar eclipse glasses to the public by reservation. The David Clark Company is bringing Air Force suits this Thursday. We are beginning planning for the summer reading program, we're doing the butterfly kits, it is the Rosie the Riveter program, we're preparing for kindergarten puppet show, the Drumming Alive, the Petunia and Tomato Plant giveaway, the Little Sparks Theater, the Hands on Nature Owl Pellets, and Wildlife Track.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd like to comment on the Deputy Director of the Auburn Public Library position. I think it's another lost opportunity not involving the Board of Trustees in conversation about this, and I'd want to at least note that.
Okay.
What I was very happy to see in that, there's a lot of things in the, in the-
The bullets.
Yeah, that I would have liked to have seen, but what I did like was recent and relevant full-time supervisory and other experience in a public library, and then, again, varied and broad-based experience in a public library, I think that really is critical. And I was concerned in page two on the top of that, where it talked about Auburn's governance structure, the Board of Trustees was not mentioned at all in that. I think that's quite a significant-
Omission.
Yes. And then, I found the credentials interesting, the MLIS and MLS were fine, and then all of a sudden, we've got candidates with related masters or bachelor's degrees, and I'd be concerned that we'd stick with the MLIS or MLS certified public library directors. When it comes to finance and budget, one of the things that the Board of Trustees has not done in recent years but did in the past, we were not involved in the conversations, that's probably our fault, because I'm not sure that we've raised that question, but there was a time when we did that. Plus, if there were any concerns about the budget and disagreements, we could actually go to the town meeting to get whatever support we needed for the library. That's the concerns I had from the art of that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I see that it's listed on the MBLC and the Town of Auburn website, but I hope that we promote this position through other more conditional job-seeking platforms in order to cast the widest net to get, you know, the most best candidates out there.
Yep, yeah. I know Steve Redding, you brought that up back in the spring of last year, the use of Indeed, and I know that we did use Indeed, there was a process with an assistant director, they went through the process, they did, I believe, use Indeed. So if we could make note of that as well, that, so you're saying in addition to the Auburn, the MBLC, but also the Auburn-
Website.
Website, we want to see more expanded opportunities to advertise.
Absolutely, we should definitely be hitting Indeed.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Nope. So we'll move on to expenditures, I just want to make sure everybody has the paperwork because I, we have multiple piles here, so I think I see Lindsay, you do, Molly, I'm sure you do, but I also have extras over here, Steve, you do. All right. Thank you, Molly, if you go ahead, thank you.
Does everyone have a copy of the?
Yeah, there's any questions?
Is this one, right?
Yes. That's true.
This one is the bill's-
Yeah, this is a chunk of them, Steve. All together. Prints of the Mountain Order that I received themselves. So they would look like everything from all the math pages. Yep, yep. This is the fiscal budget. All right, Molly, thank you for your patience. So yeah, my only question, Molly, is, is page three, it doesn't, it has, it has recap numbers, is that an extension of another page?
It's on page two.
Okay. I think I have them all. Okay.
Oh, it's, it's the one that says page one.
Okay. Page one?
Is it like this, so it carries across?
Okay, that's what I think, that's what I'm asking. So I have page one starts with overdrive, page two is PO, bid number, and that goes down to recap and numbers. Page, wait a minute, this is a couple of pages. I'm sorry, I think I have the last page in the wrong order.
So it's, it's, the recap is, lines up with the Eversource CDWG Colonial Glass Home Depot.
Okay.
And the 1400 is the subtotal of the Home Depot.
Okay.
We would be totally lost without you, right?
Yes, we would, because I have one, two, three, and the page that says Town of Auburn, and it starts with 24-610, overdrive, is that the la, is that intended to be the last page?
That's the one I have on top.
Okay.
March 26.
Okay, common page.
We do bill schedules here, so there's multiple page ones.
Okay, that's why, that's what I got confused, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the expenditures?
Not about the expenditures, but about the budget.
Okay.
First of all, just because I'm not familiar with it, when does the fiscal year start?
June, ends June, there's no story.
You like first, right?
Perfect.
Any other questions about the expenditures or the budget team? So if we do not, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. If we could, we're going to review the tactics, I sent everyone the tactics, the library director provided me at my request by Monday evening, I apologize that I was wiped out at work and I wasn't able to get that until Tuesday, so I apologize for that. I'm just going to start out, just because I'm very familiar with rubrics, which is what we call tactics in the school systems, and my only concern, and this is general to a number of the outcomes, there's nothing measurable. So when we talk about evaluating anything, whether it's a person, a program, a budget, or whatever, we talk about what is concrete, specific, and quantitative. And usually what we do is we create goals, but then we create some sort of benchmarks that we can move through. And my concern as I look through it, and I know I, a lot of the language is, language like many, something is many, it's none, it's not something that's mathematically quantifiable. So I would just, that's a big piece in terms of whenever we're looking at anything, what is the goal, what is our, what is our desired outcome, when is the outcome, how are we going to measure that, and then what is the metric, or the tactic, or the rubric that we're going to do that with? So that's just a general statement after looking at all of the, all of the feedback. Anybody else on the board?
Well, I of course would have that concern, because that's, I've been talking about that for years, about having some quantifiable data about what we do. But this is the first time we at least, since we established this in 2020, we at least have some information about what's happening, and we have never been able to get any information, and I'm appreciative of the town manager-
Yeah.
And the assistant town manager-
Yeah.
Has been in support of our work to be able to get this information.
Absolutely.
I don't know, I've gone over these, and I, I don't know whether we ought to talk about the first goal, or the second, third, or whatever goals, or what, what, what do we want to do with this?
That's what I want to ask too. I want to open that up to the board if we can. I don't want to interrupt you, though.
No, I'm, I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah, no, no, I want to open it up to the board. As I said, everything I've ever done, because I'm an evaluator of programs, I create programs, I create systems, the two things I always look at when I create a system is, I, the person who runs the program should be interchangeable, it shouldn't be about a personality, it should be about the role of somebody moving it forward, so that, I always have that in my mind. It shouldn't be about a person, it should be about a system. And then the second thing is, how do we decide whether or not we are, we are measuring the right things? How do we decide, in what, in what timeframe do we take a look at those things? And I just wanted to just open it up to the board, because this is the meaning of our body. What we're supposed to do is we're supposed to evaluate things, we're supposed to create policy, like the collections policy, and this is another opportunity that we have to just really be creative and collaborative. So opening it up, go ahead, Erica.
So my first instinct is assessments, not something that just comes naturally.
Right.
And I'm using assessment language, because I also am in education, and so, you know, talking about what is assessable, what's actionable, how we understand what's complete, what isn't complete, I think this is a good starting point-
I agree.
Because then we can say, okay, we don't have enough information here, what does complete mean? How are we measuring that? How are you measuring it? How would we? And, and so I think having that to get a sense of what, so for example, just in goal one, pursue, number two, pursue programming collaborations with Auburn Public Schools, moderate. Like, I would like to know then what sort of spectrum we're talking about, what is incomplete, what's moderate, what's complete, and that, that did not have to be like, ready to go here, especially because it's a culture that's like evolving over time. You know, what is moderate now might not be moderate next year.
Okay.
What is moderate now might have been complete last year. And so getting a sense of how we're measuring this, what we see as, as the scale.
Right.
Not to get like overly detailed about it, because then we could sit and spin our wheels in defining what moderate means, and nobody wants to do that. But also getting a sense then of, you know, in the director's estimation, she's put moderate, I would love to know more about that.
Okay.
Like, you know, some initiatives have been started, options are limited, so great, meaning, like, meaning what? I'm always going to say meaning what.
Okay.
But also because, you know, I'm used to it from the school end, not from this end.
Right.
So for, like, this is instructive for me to understand too, what we're looking for to be complete.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So what is complete?
There was a lot of words there, I'm sorry.
So it's really about wanting to understand the definition of, like, where, what are these terms referring to? So if there was a scale, for instance, beginning, we call, again, going back to education, we say, what do we say, emerging skills, we say proficient skills, we, we measure it, and usually there's a definitive way to measure that.
If I may?
Yes.
So, please. Both of you guys are looking at it from a school perspective.
Yeah.
But that might, oh, it's okay, it's allowed, we allow that.
It's the world of it. It's our world.
But that may not necessarily be applicable here, like, so we, we put out a list of tactics, and for the record, I don't like that they're called tactics, I would prefer something like metrics, because I think it's just a more accurate word for what we're doing here, is, we have a set of goals in the strategic plan, and we want this measurable X, and I think X is metrics.
Right.
So I propose we change that name.
Okay.
But we took our first shot, and we got the responses, and now we can see, okay, does it work for us? Are we asking the question we mean to be asking? Are we, you know, when we look at the response, the whole response, I actually like the answer to number two, because, okay, moderate. So we have worked with middle school with library cards, book clubs for high school, and teen advisory group, and then later on, we touch back on teen advisory group. So is, I mean, you're right in asking, does moderate mean there was a hope on the part of the library director to do more programs, or to get more engagement? Is this an opportunity for us to simply ask a follow-up question? Because I do like that they're listed, so, so that's a thing I would like to keep, is we put it out there, let's get examples. The first question is a little bit hard for me to understand, establish program performance standards. Perhaps that should have been us.
I'm sorry?
Except perhaps that should-
Say that again, because that's important.
So goal one, program and service tactics, metrics.
So it says-
Number one is, yeah, establish program performance standards, and the responses, formal reporting has been done via some surveys, responses are always very light, people prefer speaking to us directly. This is stuff we already know, right?
Yeah.
So maybe we should have established the, the performance standards, but now we know.
See, I don't think that's our job.
Okay, that's fair.
To do that. This was written, it was supposed to be so that a person could actually, what are, what are the standards? What are those program standards? What do you want from those? What are the goals? Does a program have five goals or objectives? Does it have a way it's going to be measured? What are we going to do differently if the outcome is- What are we gonna do differently if the outcome is just positive? You know that if you have a conversation after a program with a group of people, you're gonna get positive comments. That's not much of an assessment tool. But if you establish program performance standards ahead of time, this was a huge big deal. I mean, it's, it's number one in that first goal.
Okay.
And this was really the hope, that this would come out with some real straightforward performance standards. And instead, we, we really have, formal reporting has been done in some surveys. There were surveys, I believe, last May, we did have two or three surveys. I'm sure there were more than two or three programs. But, um, the, the responses are always very light. Well, of course, they're going to be light if you're asking them right there. Give them the chance for some kind of privacy.
Right.
And maybe they'll even be better. Who knows?
Yep.
But I, I think, if, if, if we have to delve into the details of defining and writing out program performance standards, then we ought to be hired by the library
Okay.
for positions. And I, but maybe what we need to do is to provide more information about what it is we're looking for. I thought we had done that with the strategic plan. But part of it is, in all these years, we've never had a chance to have any discussion about it, until now.
Right, right.
If I can, if I can jump in.
Sure.
Um, each of us comes from a different background.
Yeah, that's really important.
You know, planning and the strategic, you know, strategy and stuff like that. So I come from a, from a project and program management background. And we use a, a kind of a simple tool, uh, for coming up with, uh, um, goals, objectives. And I would say that, that, um, you know, we have the goals.
Yeah.
Uh, and what is below the goals, what we're calling tactics, for me, that would be an objective.
Right.
Okay. Um, but language is language.
Yep.
Um, and what we use is, is called the SMART tool.
Yes.
And it's a, it's an acronym that, that just is a mnemonic for, uh, for specific, measurable, attainable
Attainable.
realistic
Realistic.
and time bound.
Time bound, yep, timeframe, yep.
And each of these, for, for me, each of these, uh, um, objectives or tactics uh, should be written in, uh, you know, with, with each of these, these aspects in mind.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, we, we have a, we have a part in that, but also the library has a part in that.
Right, I agree.
And it, and, and these should really come out of a dialogue between the library and uh, in terms of, what are the, what are the details of this? What, you know, how can we make established program performance standards more specific?
Right.
You know?
Right.
By which date, you know, is it month six, or, or year, year two of the, of the five-year plan?
Agreed.
Or, you know, what, what is it? You know, that, that type of thing. Um, so I think we have a responsibility, I'm not talking about for this one, this one's already done.
Right.
Okay. But for the next one.
I agree with you.
We have to find out a way to, to dialogue with the library on this, to agree upon these objectives here.
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah.
I go, can I go back to, because, oh, to Erica? Sorry Erica, I missed you.
No, no, you're fine. And I wanted to build on that too, because I'm not a librarian, and I'm not a library professional. And I would love to hear about how libraries, what director, the staff, evaluate their programs and the language they use. And so, especially because they're on the ground and they're the ones who do the work. You know, I, I can speak to a broad sense of what assessment is, but I'm, again, not a librarian, so I would like the people who know to tell me. Right, like, this is the standard for the field, this is how the field evaluates these things.
Agreed.
Um, using some of, you know, the broad things, but then it also educates us in what we should be looking for, generally speaking, from the professionals on the ground.
Right. I would second that, I think it's where, it's where I was having a disconnect and, and not understanding how we went from like the goals, which already have like three items. Like, I'm looking at the strategic plan, I pulled it up for myself, because it's, it's not on the table, but, right? We, we say we want to offer, that goal one is offering high-quality, diverse, informative program services, resources that interest community members. And then there's one point one, deliver informational, entertaining programs that support literacy, lifelong learning, and community engagement. It just, I feel like these already had a lot of richness and detail to them, so it's why I think I was confused last time about why there was a need to, to further drill down. Um, and, and these are not very specific, to Steve's point of, offer youth teen programs, okay?
Right, right.
Great, we, we offered some.
Yeah.
Right, so, so like, I, I'm understanding the responses here, because they would be similar to ones I would give, right? If I was prompted with these things, and so, I think to your point Vera, ideally, they would be more metric-based. The, and, and so, as we look ahead, I agree with both of you that approaching it from that standpoint of, of kind of just take, I mean, this is really well-written, the strategic plan is fabulous, I think it really lays a good roadmap for, for what we wanted to see. And then, um, yeah, I, I understand your point Matt, like, we, we shouldn't be, and, and, and yours Erica, we don't, we don't know what is measur- what measurable about the programs. Um, but, you know, it sure seems like we want to make sure that, you know, how do you identify what the community's evolving needs are? And that the services are aligned with that? That would be something to dig into and understand, um, what is a diverse array of programs? Um, you know, is it that we wanted to see like, an increase in teen programming, teen-specific programming? Like, that's, that's what's hard for me when I read it, these tactics, is they're, they're just, they're very hard to like.
Yeah. To grasp.
To grasp, yeah, that, that, so that was my point last time, was I wasn't understanding how we got to this from what was already really rich text in the, in the plan.
Okay.
And another thing I, I'd like to bring up is that, is that a good strategic plan should always provide room for, um, opportunities to come up. You know, five years is a long time.
Yes, it is.
You know? And things can happen during those five years, as we saw in the last five.
We certainly did.
So, so the, the strategic plan should, should take into account that, that things happen and, uh, give room to the library to do the necessary things.
Right.
Uh, you know, to react to opportunities, to react to situations, react to, you know, not only opportunities, but threats in the environment.
Right.
You know, and this, and this type of thing. Um, and, uh, you know, the more we detail out this stuff, that, that's the, that's the sort of flip side of the coin of, of, of SMART approach, is, the more you get detailed about these things, the, the more restrictive it is, and it, it, it locks the library into maybe too much. Uh, and, and, you know, just something to think about. There's, there's no, there, there's no right solution to this, it's just, you know, the most effective at the time.
No.
So I'm gonna go back to the, a point earlier. I think tactics, rubrics, and metrics really, quite frankly, have the same meanings, but they have different connotations. So you referenced earlier that you didn't like the word tactics, and you talked about rep- metrics. So, I'm gonna just throw that out, just that piece right there, because I think it's the way people receive the word that could be considered. Tactics, we think of lawyers, we think of, we think of oppositional relationships, right? When we think of metrics, I just think of measurement. When I think of rubrics, I think of, because I work with kids, it's really important with children and, and youth, for them to understand what it is that we're looking for, so we create very concrete, you know? And A would mean that you've taken great detail to research the topic. You've done three, you've had done three pieces of resources, like, we're very specific, so that our kids can get to the colleges with those hard skills and those soft skills, right? So, when I think of rubrics, I think of all positive, because, because when I started in teaching, we graded over the kids' heads. We talked over the kids' heads, we talked about kids without kids. So I love rubric, and the word has great meaning to me. Metric to me simply means math and measurement. Tactics, I think of lawyers, and I think of, I think of cases that are oppositional. So, does the board have a, you, you talked about wanting to move the language of it to something else? Does the board have a position on that?
You know, I, the, you have to think, this document is completed, you know, this, this is the strategic plan.
Right.
But the, I, I don't care what we call them.
Right.
Here's a sentence, establish program performance standards.
Right.
There was a conversation about this, and it, it was clear that, that you, you were going to have some, you're going to take programs, you're gonna have performance standards, and then you're gonna measure those.
Right.
Pursue programs collaborative with the Auburn Public School. Where are the five or six programs? We, we didn't say twelve programs or six, because there weren't anything, there weren't things going on, so we, just go list some. And then the same thing with this, offer youth and teen programs. If we'd have, we, we had this time to be able to do things, just list three or four things, that's all that you, you try to do.
Right, right.
That, that's it.
Okay.
And I think, um, it, it's like in one-time topical programs, begin offering series-based. Well, we have done series-based programs based on grants for children before, but I don't know, what, what have we done with adults? Uh, I, I don't want to put you on the spot Molly, but I, do we have, except for that career development thing, that guy that came in and did some of that stuff? Uh, there aren't any programs for adults that are, in the same way you do have the STEM programs for children. You know, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, that's okay.
So do we have programs for adults?
Mary will put you on the spot.
Just for one example, clarifying, the historian is coming in, she's doing a series of programs.
Great.
Um, so.
It's geared to the target audience is adults.
Okay.
Do we have tax assistance, that kind of thing? No? Tax assistance?
Um, we provide tax forms.
Okay.
And that's why I was looking for something like that, A, if a parent does things like that, they're happy to use libraries to be able to do that work. And those are the kinds of things, so it wasn't that we were, that this was supposed to be a real tough thing to do, it was to try to do things that, that weren't going on.
Right.
And sadly, there's still a lot of things that aren't going on.
But I think the other piece of it, going back to Steve's point, is we want to have a transparent dialogue about, because our role is really an advisory role, policy-making role, and we do evaluate how things are going.
Well, we do, we'd understand now that we will be able to evaluate.
Correct.
That's right.
But I think what you're saying is keeping it very transparent, so that there is an influence. We do need to influence one another about how, how programming is, is moving forward.
Would this?
So, do I take it that the team doesn't really care about the language of tactics versus metrics versus rubrics? That's not a non-issue?
I think it's important.
You do?
I, I, I think, you know, to, to speak the same language, speak the same language with the library is important. Um, you know, one, one thing about metrics for me, is it's a very precise term for me.
Yes, it is.
Is, it's, it, metrics is made up of, of indicators and targets.
Yep.
And, um, we don't, we don't really have quantifiable indicators here, as, as you said Matt.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, just, you know, list out what's, you know, what, what's there and follow, follow up on it. I don't think we can be that, that specific, uh, and, and measurable in those terms. If the, a lot of these are more like zeros and ones.
Right.
You know? Either you have performance standards or you don't.
That's right.
That type of thing.
Right.
I, I think that's absolutely right.
Correct, I agree. I agree.
Is there a term that typically librarians would use for some of these? Like, rubric I get as a teacher, and it's funny, because my students come in asking for the rubric, and I'm like, here's a guide sheet? I don't use rubrics, some of my colleagues do, I find them rigid, and I agonize more over those. They just, I know a B paper when I see it.
Right.
Right, but, but, you know, I get the, I get that flexibility in college. But, so for me, I'm like, rubric, I, I start sweating, and go, oh my god, I don't know if it's a two or a three. But I also don't know, does the library, or do librarians, like, what is the scale? When you generally are assessing these things, like, what's the terms that you all use in the field? I don't know that, so I don't.
You have those questions, I can.
Yeah, that was great.
But just as an aside, uh, rubric for me, I transact the majority of my work in French. In French, rubrique means, uh, means category, means title, means heading.
That's what it means, it's flat.
Yeah.
There's no meaning.
It has no meaning.
No.
Yeah.
That's interesting, but see, that's very, very important. And going back to the point that we're always talking about, inclusion, is understanding not only what is the denotation, what is the, the, the terminology of something or the definition, but then what does it mean to different people? So what would it mean in one country versus another country? It's a really important point. And as we are looking at, like, we al- we always talk about, how do we know about the changing populations? What about, we need to know what that is, and what those, how people receive things, how they perceive things, whether they feel like they have a voice in the community, like, those are very, very important points. So I appreciate that a lot. But I, I'm so, so we'll reach out to the library director, I'm sorry, did you have, did I miss you?
No, um, oh, it's, it's like, having a better understanding of what, how the library defines success for the programming, for that first example, right? Maybe it's not specific standards, because, yeah, success at the Christmas decorating of the, like, reindeer with stickers, there's not a lot of performance standards, other than that, like, we had a hundred percent filled, you know, everyone loved it, and the kids left happy. And so, you know, it's, it's like, I, I don't, performance standards almost feels rigid, right? So I think some of this is like thinking about how you guys feel like, what's, like, high-five worthy at the end, right? Like, did everybody come, and the kids were all laughing and having a great time? Like, not every perf- like, not every program is gonna have, like, clear standards, right? And so, so that, so that, that's something I wanna, no, no, I know, I wanna, but, but like, to understand what are the ones that we would really want to under- like, measuring literacy as like a, that's a long-term thing, and if it's a one-day or one-week program. Sure, but wait, but so this, this is what I'm saying, it's like, what's the definition of suc- success for these? And, and I, I don't know how you measure specific performance standards, to Erica's point, I don't know how the library thinks about that.
Though, this is important, let's make one point though. Because, because I think we have one formal meeting in May prior to reorganizing, so, you, this is rich, because I think what I'm hearing, I'm sorry Matt, I cut you off, but I think we, what I'm hearing from the board is, we need more, we need to know what more, and really, and like, these terms that are being used, we need more specifics. We also want to know what would be a, a, a receivable, uh, language for us to be able to measure things as a board. And then the third thing, going back to your point Steve, is, we need to have an open dialogue about this in order to, if we are gonna dig in, and we're going to create the next steps of a strategic plan, it needs to be very transparent. And it shouldn't feel as though
And concrete.
And concrete, but I also think, an important point, and this is left unsaid, but I'm just gonna say it, because I'm that person. I think a lot of the struggles that we've had is that what we're looking for as a board is to evaluate programming. We're not looking at evaluating the library director. And I think that, and this is where, this is where my position in education is, is key to this role that I'm sitting in. It's important to me as an educator that I could be replaced with anyone. And that person would be able to move the system on, because the focus of my work is the kids, it's not me. Uh, I think similarly, if you're any leader, whether you're in the library, you're in a school, the system should drive what we're doing. So, a lot of what I'm concerned about is the historical, if we've been over the past ten or fifteen years, if one person is the, the keeper of all the information, it's not transparent, it's not public, and it's not something that we can, we can have an influence moving forward. But if we can create some sort of transparent, whether it's a document, and it doesn't have to be a super, you know, indicator, fixated piece, but I think it needs to be something that's transparent, that we can post, that we're looking at improving this by certain amount. This language means this language. We're not, we're not looking, we're not judging anybody's performance, what we're doing is trying to move the library forward and make sure that we have input from stakeholders, is that fair?
Well, I, I just want to go back to Lindsay's point, but I, I heard what you said, and I, I get back to that.
Yeah.
But Lindsay, I, I've not opposed to having children's programs that are fun.
Yeah.
But I would not want to have any program that is not literally literacy-based, that is not have some value, that in some way doesn't do something about reading.
Right.
I think they make that attempt, I don't think we've gotten any of that information here, but I think the attempt is made at the library.
Right.
If all we do is replicate what you do in a preschool program.
Right.
Then I think we failed.
Right.
This is a library, it's, it's not a preschool program, they, they're all, they're, they're commercial ones all over town. And I, 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 I think that that's what's really important, that we're doing something unique and something special with children.
Welcoming.
Well, yeah, for sure.
Yep.
And these words came from library specialists, the person that was a consultant here, consultant, consults with libraries all over the state.
Right.
And actually, New England.
Yeah.
So, the, I, the people that were involved in this from the Board of Trustees, they knew the language, what kind of language, what other language. But the consultants knew this, and probably the twenty to thirty library directors that we spoke to were also helpful in all of this kind of stuff. And that's where a lot of these things came from.
Okay.
They, they didn't come out of nowhere.
Right, right.
Now, they, the tactics weren't listed, and Lindsay raised this important point last week. What, what, where do these come from? Well, they came from because the Well, they came from because the consultant believed, and the town manager time believed, that there had to be more clarification to goals, or we were not going to get anywhere. That we would not have a product of any kind yet. And so, that's why the, the, that was supposed to help the person figure out a way to, to reach those objectives, was to do these kinds of things, regardless of what you call them. That, that there was supposed to be a way, if, if, for, for the first goal on programs and services, establish program performance standards. Now, I, I would have assumed that a person, a library professional, and I know we only have one person with a degree in library science here, but that's what I would expect, that that person would, would be able to understand and to be able to translate, so that we would be able, because this is library language things in here. That they would be able to translate that for us.
Right.
And I, I do think that this is much better than nothing, way better.
I agree, yeah.
So I, even though, you know, in lots of places, I have, whoever said it's either or, yes or no, zero or one, that's what I have in a lot of places. But I, I do think that whenever we get a library director back at our meetings, we could have conversations about these things, and be able to move somewhere with them. But I think it's very difficult to, I could, I could talk about every one of these things, I have to tell this, but I'm not, there's no point in that, is there?
I guess there's always a-
It's for our implication, what?
There's always a point.
Yeah, but I mean, for whose implication is this?
Right, right.
And for what purpose?
But I think, going back to the point about the Barbara Elvarez, did I pronounce her name correctly? Barbara Elvarez?
How about it's?
It's close, I didn't want to say Alvarez, but that's not, but the same spelling difference, pronoun. Anyway, she was, it was like professional development for me, because in all the things that we said, the world of library, the world of school, I learned a lot from her. And what she did is almost like professional development activities. We had to brainstorm things, she had to explain what all the other libraries were doing. So I felt like I, I, I gained, I gained what I felt like I developed in my knowledge because of her leadership. But I think as a board, it would be rich if we could experience that on a monthly basis, and that we could, you know, have open conversation, to your point, Matt, I totally agree. But I think, going back to what Vera said, I think it's, it's really important that we are working in partnership, but also that we're, um, I think we, I'd be love, I'd love to have the library director back at our meetings, that would be awesome. But for right now, I just wanna, I wanna make sure, in this, in the spirit of time, it's twenty thousand seven, what is our goals for our next meetings? Because right now, I do have only one other thing on the agenda, which I want Erica to be able to speak to herself as library person of the month. But I want to hear from the board, because we have one hour meeting in May. If anyone wanted to have a subcommittee on any particular thing, we could do that as well. What, what would be the goal? We have our tactics, to your point, we have something, right? What do we want to do with this? Because the goal of the last meeting would be to pass on whatever the, whatever the goals are to the next board, which would be re, reorganizing in mid-May, two weeks later.
Well, hold on, Steve, did you want to say something?
Yep.
Oh, okay, so in that case, I will say something.
Okay. Go for it.
So we've, we, we were gonna meet to develop a template, and we haven't been able to this last time, because we were all traveling at separate times, because naturally, that's how things work on a, on a month-to-month basis. But now that we have the strategic plan, and we have the tactics, and we see the tactics in action, which I would, if we're gonna default to a word, perhaps assessment in the interim, so it's not, you know, shady sounding. We can, we can kind of settle on assessment for the time being. So if there's interest between the two of you still, and we can actually all be in the state at the same time, maybe we can- Yeah, right, maybe we can get together and take the two, and see if we can kind of work it into a, a form that can be applied for next year's report, right? Because we're looking at this annually. I also think that we should plan perhaps to review these answers and discuss these answers. You know, because I think that's important. I think that for anybody who tunes in to see this meeting, and we know that people do, it's, it's a benefit, because they don't get to sit at the table and read the paperwork with us.
Right.
So.
So is that a question? Do you want to have a-
Do you want to have?
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
You too. What would be the format of that, Vera?
The format of the, of the-
Subcommittee.
Oh, subcommittee, I'm sure Tom at the next meeting.
Nope, we're gonna get that, to that next, what do, what are you thinking in terms of the subcommittee? Are you thinking about-
We have to set a date right now.
That's right, all right, okay. Not Tuesdays.
Wednesdays are good for me.
Okay.
Uh, I think Wednesdays are okay, yeah, Wednesdays work. Let me just look out a couple of weeks, but yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, 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 so if everybody- To look at the strategic plan and to look at the tactics, and see if we can kind of take the best and get the, you know, like, um, either clarify language, or where we say, like, for example, you know, grow these things, show growth, or if you, feel free to jump in, like, you're always welcome.
Well, I guess-
No, 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 I don't get it, but what I do mean, I, I guess what, were there to be any concerns? It's one of the questions for the, for a library director, what are the questions that we do want to ask a library director? And maybe that's what you guys can formulate, questions related to this, is that?
So, so that-
That, that would be in, uh, in, in the course of discussing the, uh, you know, how we review the report.
Okay.
And that kind of thing, yeah.
Okay, I like it.
So eleven o'clock Wednesday, Heritage Cafe.
That sounds awesome.
Oh, sorry, like, hang on, what day, next, next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Would be the ten.
Yeah, daytime is hard for me.
Could be in the afternoon for me, how's that for you?
Um, three, three on would be fine.
Three o'clock, Wednesday?
I believe that works.
Then, but Heritage Cafe is only open until what, two?
Open until two.
We will find-
We'll find-
Yeah, we will find another place.
Dunkin' Donuts, yeah. They have a room, yeah, yeah.
So can we ask you to sort of be our leaders at the next meeting? And just sort of, in, in leadership of where are we going with these, where are we going with, how do we want to move forward with, with the tactics and where we're at, moving into our next strategic plan? So if you could share, I'm looking to you, because you're the, you seem to be the cheerleader here. Sort of share what your outcome of your meeting was, and we'll start a discussion there. And the hope would be to tighten up what our goals are for the next, um, Board of Trustees year.
Okay.
Which would start, again, we, our last meeting is, is the first of May, then we reorganize two weeks into May. So we have a formal meeting, but then we don't meet again until September. So I, like, my proposal would be that we have sort of a concrete plan about where we're going with our strategic plan tactics, and how we want to move forward as a team. And that would give us, and going back to one of our former members, John, used to talk about how important it was to have, to have benchmarks. If, if this is our goal, when do we want them by? So what I would ask for the team, the subcommittee, if you could think about where you want to see things, like, okay, so if we on the, um, May first, this would be our, our objective of that meeting. And then in September, even in a general way, where would we like to take the tactics? And then where, you know, the, just the, the trajectory, where we, where do we want to go?
But this is forward-looking with the, the new strategic plan.
Correct.
So like a production schedule for the new strategic-
That's exactly what I said.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I, I eat these words for breakfast.
I love it, I completely agree.
I think you need better breakfast.
Yeah, I know.
I really appreciate your leadership, Lindsay, Vera, and Steve on that matter. I feel like that was very productive conversation. Does anybody want to add anything before I turn the table over to Dr. Breszaker, yes?
Yes. We're aware that we can now set goals for the Auburn Public Library Director.
Correct.
The Board of Trustees, that's really part of our work.
That's correct.
Uh, the evaluation eventually comes on those goals as well. Well, we did a set of goals in September.
Okay.
What I would like to do is to, and I guess we'd almost have to vote again. Here, we've, I mean, I'll try to do this very fast.
Okay.
The thing was to hire a librarian, an assistant director. Well, that would either be, either be for September or December.
Okay.
Which is now in process, and so we'd have to change the date of that. Work with whatever resources available to return to a full staff. I, I put, I guess of October first, twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
No, twenty twenty-four, that's still this year. That offer technology classes, that's one of the things in this report, we, we said, offer classes, offer classes, all the libraries offer classes, we don't offer any classes.
Okay.
It says, offer technology classes in other young adult programs at least thirty, with measurable outcomes, aside from craft offerings. And I'm gonna change that date to April first, twenty twenty-five. So there's plenty of time for it. And then the monthly, uh, Board of Trustees Director's report should include those three things that we said to include before. That's, those would just be ongoing.
Right.
But I would like, before, you have to send those to the director. I think we should have a vote on that, just to confirm the vote that we did last September. So I'm moved on those goals for the Auburn Public Library Director.
So that's Matt, do we have to start?
So do we have, do we, I don't, do we have these? Where are these?
So the-
You would, you would not hear yet. I, I have this, I have a copy I can show you.
That would be great.
I mean, the dates I just read are not on this.
It was distributed at a past meeting.
This was from September sixth, two thousand twenty-three. So we, what we talked about is establishing goals.
And at that time, we were gonna ask the town manager to do that, but it's, town manager's clarified first that we can't set these goals.
Yeah, yep.
Um, should we do that in the May meeting? Because then we have time that way, especially, because I remember voting on this, I was here in September. Right, and then that way we can have a fuller discussion about where those came from.
Yeah.
Because I know they came from the strategic plan, and they came from-
No, they came actually from-
Oh, from the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if nothing else, maybe we have a fuller discussion about that in May.
I would support that.
It's, it's not gonna have a change.
Yeah.
Well, we voted on it already, but I support you. Um, is everybody in agreement with that? So in other words, making sure-
My motion.
Right, just, we could make sure that everybody, every member is completely oriented on what we're voting on, that would be awesome.
And I think that gives us the time to, you know, because it's for the next year, then we'll all break for summer.
Right.
Nothing's gonna happen anywhere in between, so it's good.
Yeah.
But, but I will say that, you know, Vera and I have had a great experience with meeting with the library, the, sorry, the town manager and the assistant town manager, and they're very on board in terms of having an assistant director. I know there was a process that somebody was in the process of accepting the position, and they decided it wasn't the right time for them, so that, that process did move on. We're happy to see that it's being posted now. They're definitely on point and on board that we need to fill up the staff. That's been, had been very, very outspoken about that. And in terms of your other pieces, Matt, yeah, I would agree that if Lindsay could be able to be, be able to research exactly where, where that came from.
September twenty-third, or the September meeting.
And you could look up, you could even look at the past meetings, they're all on. We, we started recording our meetings on, um, live streaming back in two thousand and twenty. So any meeting, you can go back and you can read it, and you can look at the minutes.
I'm here to be trying to find that.
Mary, just one thing.
Yes.
Um, the, uh, the, the assistant director.
Yes.
Is different from the library associate that's already been engaged, is that correct? Yeah, so the library associate has already been engaged.
The new person that's-
The new person.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Is that Alicia?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, okay, thank you.
Question. They did, actually, they came right up, they had many interviews with an assistant director, they didn't call it a deputy director, it was an assistant director. It really looked positive, and then the person just said it wasn't the right time for, for that person. But they were very, they were thrilled with the, with the quality of the candidate. We were excited to hear that we're moving forward, so that's great. So I'm not delaying the process, Dr. Breszaker.
I'm trying to delay it.
You hope the bell rings.
Pretty much, pretty much. Yeah, so I'm Erica Breszaker, just call me Erica. I only make people I'm mad at call me Dr. Breszaker. I'm actually not from Massachusetts at all, I'm from Wisconsin, I was born in Milwaukee, and grew up in a very small town north of there, that actually reminds me a lot of Auburn. In both good and bad ways, right? Because it's hard to jump into a new place. So my husband's from St. Louis, and we met in college, and we went to school in central Illinois, and then started the long trek across the country, because we were both at graduate school. So I have a PhD in history, my husband has PhD in sociology, and we went through grad school, southern Illinois, northeast Ohio at Kent State, and then here, teaching at Worcester State. So my area of expertise is German history, so I read a lot of European history. I teach in French history, and Italian history, and German history, uh, and also public history and working in museums. So that's my other hat, is I have a degree in museum studies. So I read a lot, and I write a lot. And so, being on the library board was just really exciting, because that was the formative thing. I grew up going to our little library that was in a corner of a room when I was a kid, because my town had sixteen hundred people when I was little, it's now bustling four thousand five hundred. Look at us go. And, uh, you know, now they actually have a library, like, floor. That's pretty exciting, they now have a museum that just opened in the last, like, year and a half. So my town is now a real town, we still don't have a McDonald's or Dairy Queen, but hey, little, little by little. But my, my whole history was just growing up reading anything that had words. And I was the kid who checked out the encyclopedias at school, in first and second and third grade, where people were like, you don't read those, do you? And yes, I do. And that has continued, and my house has stacks of books, it, watch out, you know, people have knickknacks. I have stacks of books that fall over, and my office at work has stacks of books that fall over. And I've raised readers as children, too, so. We have books everywhere, and, and it's why it's been really exciting to be on this end of things. I'm not used to being on this side, I'm usually used to fighting against trustees, not being a trustee. Which is why-
Different kind.
It's definitely a different, a different hat to wear, but it's also interesting to see it on this end, too, and, and watch what library and staff do, and, and professionals do, and, and how it works in the community. And getting, you know, I've lived in Massachusetts now almost twelve years, and lived in Auburn since two thousand and thirteen. So it's like, it's another way to get connected to the community, so. And one of my kids was born in Massachusetts, but the rest of them were born in different states. I also had kids across the country, Illinois and Ohio and Massachusetts, but-
Sounds pretty good.
No, no, um, but, yeah, my oldest is about to graduate from Salem State, so.
Oh, neat.
Yeah, very exciting.
Neat.
Really quickly adopted in Massachusetts and New England, though he was in fifth grade when we moved here, so. Yeah, it's been interesting.
What's your favorite thing about Massachusetts?
The sense of humor is very much like Wisconsin, and I grew up in another place that calls it a bubbler. So when Worcester people say, where's the bubbler, I know what they mean. And, and when I went home and said to Milwaukee people, you know, there's another place in the world that calls it a bubbler, they didn't believe me. So I showed them, so it was really funny to me that I found the only other place to call it the drinking fountain of bubbler. But, yeah, the sense of humor is good, when I was in Ohio, my students, like, never could tell if I was kidding, and here they don't care. Which is great, because I'm, I'm a very sarcastic, sort of dry sense of humor person, and students connect with that. There's the self-deprecating Midwest thing.
Yeah.
And, and New Englanders aren't all that different, honestly. So I really like that, and it's, it's, it took a little bit to, to really get roots here, but now that we have, it's like, I can't, even though I'm Midwestern through and through, I'm sort of like, that was little Erica. New America lives here.
So forgive me on this one, but you just published a book, can you talk about that, please?
Yeah, so I wrote a book, um, that was built on my dissertation, um, built on research that I did in Germany. My area where I, where I study and where I research is in Lübeck, which not many people have heard of, but it's on the Baltic Sea in northwestern Germany. And the other small fact about me is that I don't fly, so I take boats when I go to Germany to do research. My ever-suffering husband navigates months where I'm away doing research, because you never know when it'll be. But my book, built on my dissertation, was about Lübeck and festival from the nineteen twenties through the nineteen sixties. And, you know, went over the unfortunate Nazi time, but then also got bits of the Cold War, British occupation, and the nineteen twenties after World War One, and lots of marzipan eating, because that is what Lübeck is famous for, so. So, yeah, that book came out after working on that project for seventeen years, it's actually older than two of my kids. It's actually older than two of my kids.
Wow.
And, and now I'm working on a second book, but the first one finally is out and done, and in theory, I'll stop talking about it.
Well, what's the title, though?
The title is called Festival Culture and Identity in Lübeck, Nordic Days 1920 to 1960.
Awesome.
Very exciting title. It's such an academic title that I never spoke. You know, yeah. We academics write very formulaically for titles. There's always a colon, there's always something pithy.
There you go.
You know, it's-
You have to put that degree to work.
Something pithy.
Pithy.
Yes.
Pithy, yeah. Now, my, the title was totally different. It was Nordic Days, and then my editor went literally three weeks before I went to press. He was like, yeah, we're going to change the title. We're going to flip it. And I, okay, I don't care.
At this point.
As long as it works, just-
17 years is 17 years.
17 years is 17 years, yes. And, and the whole family was very happy when that book came out. The downside is I was dumb and signed a second contract before the first book was done. So now that one's two years late. And so I told my editor, she's waiting-
Where are you traveling to for that one?
Actually, nowhere. That one was based on pandemic experiences and the, like, material culture of masks.
Oh.
So looking at masks not as like, some, like, it's symbols, but museum objects.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where we are. So the next book has to wait. That one I'll be going back to Germany for, but probably not until at least next summer, if I can talk Alex into letting me get on a boat again.
Just a few minutes will make the airplane ride so much easier.
That's what everybody says. I haven't flown since January 2001, I'm good.
Oh.
Trains, boats, and automobiles.
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, besides, besides your, you know, obvious, you know, German heritage.
Sure.
Why Germany?
I don't know. It's just fascinating to me.
Something you've got out there, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Well, and so, you know, both sides. My maiden name is Camholtz. My married name is Briesacker.